I'll do the calendar.
Bob, Bob, we're the whole room.
Yep.
We're good.
Can I get everyone to stand please?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder, um, please turn off your cell phones or turn off the lights, I guess. Silence them, I guess is the term.
Yeah.
Not like that.
Sorry.
Um, audience participation, uh, when you come up, just come up to the podium. Uh, everyone gets five minutes. Uh, trustee Davern here is gonna be the one who records you, as far as time to you, I should say. That being said, can I get a motion to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock?
Can I make a motion to begin the meeting?
Thank you, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, this was the reorganization and regular meeting.
I make the motion, they're made by the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, correspondence, Christine.
Okay. Um, we have the meeting minutes from April fourteenth, the reorganization meeting and the regular meeting of the village board meeting, um, were completed and distributed by the deputy clerk. First quarter sales tax of two thousand twenty-five was received from Orange County. It's up five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents from this time last year, which is one point seventeen percent. Trustee Latimer sent an email regarding the completion of his quarterly review of the bank reconciliations, which he will finish when the accountant comes in and completes her time. Um, she's coming again tomorrow, I think she'll be done, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Um, the tax limit form for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget has been completed with the New York State Comptroller and the budget has been certified by me. Bank of New York melon statements have been received for the weeks of April seventh and April fourteenth. Mayor Carey received a letter from the village of Otisville resident David Seeley regarding his interest in becoming a planning board member, and we have received results of the auctions, international auctions, in the total of nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Did you want me to read Mr. Seeley's letter?
Was it planning board or ZBA?
Oh, ZBA, I'm sorry, it was ZBA, yeah.
You can read it, just one.
Brian, I am writing to express my strong interest in serving on the zoning board of appeals for the village of Otisville. As a longtime resident, I am deeply invested in our community and eager to contribute its, to its continued well-being and development. My extended experience in the construction industry has provided me with a practical understanding of building codes, zoning regulations, and site development. I believe this background would be valuable asset to the board as it reviews and considers zoning appeals. Thank you for your time and consideration, I look forward to the opportunity to discuss my application further. Sincerely, David Seeley.
Thank you. Okay, move right along here, DPW report.
I got a few things now. Uh, build out the two thousand twenty-five leak detection program application for the village. It's no cost to the municipality, just waiting on the response. Um, on April seventeenth, myself and the mayor went up to Robbie Green to pick up our new dump truck. Working on getting prices for some roadwork, fiber mat and floor lane, Jeffrey Court. Looking into paving possibly main street from the bridge to the turnaround, paving Glen Terrace. Also looking into doing some oil and chip in a few streets.
All right, um, we're getting ready for trash next week, um, and the guys been cleaning up streets in the winter. We picked up the tree and planted it in up the park for this weekend, or last weekend. They put the, uh, car on the playground, put them today. They finished up painting the plows and they put them away for summer, hopefully. And, um, I met with, uh, Casey from O R, and we went over that project. It looks like it's gonna be very good, and he's gonna have stuff start coming in this week.
Okay, good. Um, I know I talked to you today, John, they're starting the floor, the epoxy floor up at the old part of the firehouse?
Yes, I got, I got, I'm on here tomorrow, it's okay.
Okay, so he's gonna start on Monday. Tony, I don't think I reached out to you to tell you that, but did he call you today?
He called me today, and I let him in up there today, and I looked, he wanted to look at it. He said he'd be there Tuesday, calling.
Okay, that's fine, as long as he's communicating with you, that's fine, okay. That'll be good to get that done, okay. Moving right along here, is that all you got, John?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Town of Mount Hope, care what you got?
Um, I don't have a lot, on our last meeting, we did, um, pass our, the, um, ATV law, which has been back and forth for a couple of months, just restricts ATV use in the more dense subdivision areas of the town, like Hidden Valley, so that has been updated. Um, we also upgraded our pedler's license law, that you don't need a pedler's license to participate in a town-sponsored event, like our bicycle panel. Um, we re-sign, we voted to re-sign our contract with Millennium Grants, which I know, in conjunction with you for next year, for the next year. And then our recreation department has a couple of upcoming activities on May tenth, which is a Saturday, there's a Mother's Day craft, and then on June twenty-first, there's a CPR and first aid class. They both do have signup links online, there's no charge, but you just need to sign up on the website. They are also looking to start an adult book club, and they're looking for a volunteer of an adult to lead the book club, if anybody's interested. That information's also online. And then the Lego Club has been temporarily postponed. Had a lot of attendees during spring break, but after that, not so much. They're gonna hold hard again when the summer comes. That's all I have.
Thanks, um, I know you, so go ahead, go ahead.
Your book club, where and when?
They haven't started yet, they're looking for an adult volunteer to kind of be the leader of the book club. So if she's interested, she can email Kathleen Bello, it's k bellow@townofmounthope.org, and she can look around coordinating around her schedule.
Okay.
I wasn't checking out a location, so.
I mean, probably we do it at the, at the youth center or the senior center on one of our buildings, but no date or time set yet.
Summer concert series, I know you guys released it today, and I gave the board copies in their mailboxes of this year. Fire chief's report. Tony, what do you got, are you excited?
Yeah, well, the floor, we've already went over that. In a couple of, I'm gonna make appointments for our annual testing for our hose and all that. I'm gonna get that set up. And we're gonna start driver training in a week, so if you see the trucks out running around, that's, that's what we're doing. And the other thing, the house that was condemned, can we secure that door?
I'm trying to figure out who's gonna do that, but Javier is back on Thursday. Yeah, I'll get with the police, and they can go up there with him, and we'll do it, we'll put something through it. I know it's open, I knew.
I checked it before I came here too, and it's opening in, so.
Okay.
I think somebody's closing it, but then somebody's opening it.
What's the number on Orchard? Is it thirty?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five Orchard. There was a big problem with the house, so it was Javier went in, actually the town went in first, and then Javier followed through, and they condemned it, so there's signs all over the house porch, which you can't get up the back porch anyway, because it's missing like five steps. But the front door is open. Which is concerning, because we don't want anyone kind of hanging out there, so, okay. Well, uh, I'll, I'll get with, I'll get with the police department, and I'll get with Javier, and we'll, they'll go up together on Thursday and close it.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Tony. All right, trustee reports. Mr. Bob, I think we're gonna start with you this time.
I did the cap assignment, I gotta send you an email yet. I had a couple of chores headed, I'll do that, seems like it. Looking over the new liaison, I just have a question.
Sure.
On the buildings and building projects, and the building department, is it, what's the, what's the difference? If you're into that.
I'm gonna explain this to you fully when we start our meetings next month, but here's what I would say. Building, building and building projects would be, um, as an example, looking to do something with a foyer this year. Um, so that would be under building projects. Anything dealing with buildings, we don't have a lot of buildings, but obviously this building, the firehouse, the water plant, and what's the other one? And what was the other question, building projects?
Building department.
Building department, yeah.
Oh, okay, so building department, I think I put a couple of you guys on it. That's what I wanted to, I didn't fully explain that, but I would say this, um, as you'll see, like, there's some double stuff. Um, not that I want you guys doing double the work, but, you know, you can still stop in and talk to Javier, and just see what's going on in the building department. I know Lance had that before, but, uh, I figured it couldn't hurt to put two people on something to kind of get feedback for both. It doesn't need to be every meeting, I'm not saying, you don't need to come here every meeting and report on the building department. But you will get copies of, going forward in, uh, in May, you'll get cop, everyone will get copies of the building report. This way, you all have it, know what's going on, that's all.
Good, I noticed, good, that you, uh, pretty much everybody, that there's, uh, two assignments for each one, pretty much.
Yes, you look like you have an awful lot on, when it's printed off, I'm like, oh, okay, but, um, again.
I'm the oldest.
You know what, that's the reason why, okay.
We won't comment.
Yeah, don't comment.
It's only a matter of months if you are.
I'm glad you're the one that said that, though.
Yes, yes.
But basically, I mean, we're both not gonna do the same thing, we want, like, if they got it beforehand, or, you know.
The purpose of it is to communicate with it between each other.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea.
The purpose of it is, is to do one meeting a month, the other one will be a work session, and hopefully get the communication of our five board members a little more than what we're at right now, that's all.
Very nice.
A little improvement, that's all.
All right, good.
And again, it doesn't need to be every meeting, if something comes up, something comes up, if it doesn't, then it doesn't, but, okay.
Not, not, I don't really have anything, uh. Just for.
Perfect, no problem, Brian, what do you got?
All right, you kind of touched on the fire department already, and I spoke with John about the air conditioner, and we're just gonna figure out what to do. We're gonna wait, right, until we have a plan.
We got a plan, closing it up, everyone close it up.
That's it for the fire department. Uh, the union, I gave you guys all, um, what's going to be changing, um, within their contract, stuff to look over, review, and then we're gonna get the full enchilada this week, hopefully, maybe next week.
Make a tweet up, I gotta talk to Ray, and I'll give it Kate, they can live together. Because if they had some changes over the union, he don't have the actual contract.
Right.
In his computer over there.
No, she can send it.
Yeah, she can.
So this was the big changes, nothing else is really changing, so. Wanted to get the guys a little bit earlier, but unfortunately, kind of, so. So we can review that whenever, and whatever you want to do.
Is it the changes, I would just say the changes that were made, obviously we have the sheet for, we'll get the whole contract, hopefully by the twelfth, um.
Before the twelfth.
Before the twelfth, okay.
For the next meeting, yes.
We'll, we'll talk about it, uh, worst case, if you need more time, we'll just, I, I'd just like to finalize it by the end of May. That's really the goal.
Yeah.
Which would be not our board meeting, but would be our work session, um, on the twenty, uh.
And you said we could still vote on stuff, right, during that?
Yeah. And Rory, the only thing that I would ask of you on that is, um, once we get it, a copy of it, obviously, I think you should look at it, just to make sure the wording's good, and then, um.
That was my question for you earlier, I wasn't sure if you.
I don't think, well, he has not, he hasn't touched it yet.
I don't think you ever have, so that's why I was like, I really don't know for sure, yeah.
So he hasn't touched it yet, but just to make sure the bird's chirps, that's all.
Yeah, you got it.
So that's it with the, oh, go ahead.
I'll just, I'll do it offline, it can wait.
Okay. It for the union, um, stuff, the streetlight program, still going through some stuff there. I have nothing really outstanding, I am gonna continue to ask, send the info. I do not believe they ever made it over to the streetlight in the municipal parking lot.
Not yet.
Does that?
Yep, still wanna do it, but yes.
That was you, the top of that, okay. So that's still.
And I don't know that they did the one on the back here.
No.
The one that's on the, um, lot back here. Yeah.
Thought that one was done, I had that one on the thing, it's done.
The streetlight was done, but they didn't do this, the, the light that hits the floodlight, yeah.
Oh, that's gonna be, that's gonna be, unfortunately, that's how it works. Okay, I'll, I'll put, I'll put something else in for that, that's a little bit different, but, okay.
Nothing happens that fast, but as long as it's on the list eventually to get done, that's.
And, um, nonprofits, Little League is moving right along, season's underway. And as far as the other nonprofits, I have no information on this time.
That's fine.
That's all I have. Oh, and I think Christine mentioned before, I'm basically done with my quarterly review.
Yeah.
But it's, I guess the other part is to leave. That's it.
Okay, Lance, what do you got?
Not much, sorry for making this weekend, I was in the warm weather, I got back in the cold weather this mo, yesterday morning. That's why I wasn't having as much.
It was a complete washout on the, on the.
No, eighty-foot degrees, I was wearing shorts, walking down the road, yeah, okay, wrong place. The park committee, I'm waiting to find a more O N R before I decide to have one, so they have an input on what O N R doing, what, so that's why I have not made a park meeting yet. Everybody know both parks are open, the Little League and Veteran Park, come out and then join them. I'll come in tomorrow and do my cap assignment, since I'm on the way. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Lance.
I'm on the parks committee with you, Lance, when you.
I'll let you know.
Go home.
Diane, what do you got?
Planning board and zoning board, the alternate member on the planning board, I mentioned at the last meeting, I had asked if she would consider, um, taking the empty seat on the ZBA, and she was not interested in doing so. So that seat does remain vacant. I know that Christine read the letter of interest for that seat, and I, I'd like to talk about that, in that from the letter and what's stated, I actually think you'd be better on the planning board. So I was wondering if someone from the planning board would be willing to switch over, so just kind of to think about. Because somebody with a construction background would be great on the planning board. Um, I did talk with the planning board chairman, let him know that both Bob and I are now covering, sharing the liaison responsibilities for the two boards. I had emailed, um, after our last meeting, when the mayor indicated that he wanted to, um, check in with the, with the planning board attorney on an issue. I did email the planning board chairman, secretary, and the attorney with the questions, uh, on the proposed new business behind the municipal parking lot. And she responded right away, she got back to me, uh, April seventeenth, and I forwarded that on to the man and the building inspector. And, um, I've been in touch with Javier since then, he told me that he has sent her, I guess, asking for further clarification, so. I don't know if he has addressed the issue of the sign, that was a separate issue, and he had told me that he was going to do that, but I don't know if he has.
He was here today, wasn't he?
Yes, I missed him, I came in and he already left. Community advisory board for the state federal prisons is scheduled, keep our fingers crossed, nothing happens, I'm ready to have it. Um, we are supposed to be meeting on Wednesday, May the fourteenth, at the FCI Training Center. So if there are any issues or anything that you would like brought up, uh, please let me know before then. Now, I hope seniors, uh, want to thank everyone who came out to support the seniors' spring boutique last Saturday. It was a very successful event, despite the fact that it was pouring rain on a full day long. But people braved the rain to come out, and, and the money raised at that event is used to, uh, for our annual scholarship that's awarded to a missing valley graduating senior each year. Brian Monahan, the superintendent for Mina Sync, will be meeting with the seniors next Thurs, next Tuesday, rather, May the thirteenth, to discuss the upcoming school budget and the school board elections. Any interested residents are welcome to join us, uh, he will, he's supposed to be there at two o'clock at the senior center on Baker Street, so that's Tuesday, the thirteenth, at two o'clock. Hometown helpers, last week was volunteer appreciation week, and the town invited the hometown helper volunteers to a breakfast social on Thursday morning, Carey Lee was there as well. The gesture was very much appreciated by all the volunteers, it was really, really nice to get everybody together. And while we're talking about getting everybody together, our annual hometown helper volunteer appreciation luncheon is going to be held on Monday, May the nineteenth. And I would like to formally request that the village clerks be authorized to close the office of eleven that day, so that they can attend the luncheon. I think everyone knows by this point, they are, uh, serve an essential role with hometown helpers in that the town and the village clerks are, in essence, our hometown helper answering service. So one of the reasons we believe our program is as successful as it is, is that there are human beings answering the phone. And people don't have to call and, and leave a message on an answering machine, but they get to talk to a very caring and compassionate young lady when they call, so, um, I would ask that they be authorized to attend that. Yard sale, we're still hoping to recruit a couple of new volunteers to serve on the yard sale planning committee. Um, if anyone's interested, just call Christine at the village hall or call me directly. It really only involves about three meetings prior to the yard sale, because it's, we sort of have it all down, it's a matter of going through the list of, you know, getting the advertisements out, and who's going to, uh, take care of what. So if anyone feels that they probably could spare a few hours, two or three times before the sale, please let me know. Then just following up on a couple of questions, um, you weren't at the last meeting, John, but I had asked if the plain cemetery water was turned on yet.
I got it, I could get that done in a month.
Yeah, because I know they've been down there cleaning up, and she's gonna be planting soon, so, rather than have her have to call and ask for it, um.
Actually, piggyback right off that, when you turn the water on at the ball fields, can you do that at the same time? Save a trip.
Ball fields are on.
Oh, I know they're on.
Yeah, that's what I suggested, it's the last meeting, is that it's already done at the same time, so.
Just to make it easier on you guys. You know what I mean?
The other thing at the last meeting, I don't remember if it was Brian, if it was Brian or Brian, but, uh, said that it was going to be, the Little League was going to be purchasing a battery for the AED machine. Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, I think they, yeah.
No, 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 they were, that's what I was.
Yeah, they were gonna be doing all that on their own.
Pets and battery, they were.
And we're gonna follow up to make sure of that, or?
I will, yeah, I mean, it is, they're.
I mean, now I'm no longer the Little League person, so I don't want to.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll follow up with them.
Yeah.
As far as I know, it was donated to them, so, yeah, they were gonna do all the light work, so.
Little since we, and it wasn't me, but identified that as a concern a few meetings back, I wanted to make sure we followed up with it. And the other thing I had was about the condemned house. Mayor, you said the town went in first, you mean the police withdrew it first, and then, then we came, or?
No, the town went in first, the police department called here, Javier had left for the day. They had called the building department for the town, Julie went down, talked to Javier, Javier went up the next day and condemned.
Okay, and my personal experience from past years, we haven't condemned that many buildings, is that as soon as the building inspector condemned it, if it was not secure, he would contact a company that does that, and it would be done immediately, and then billed to the property owner, so.
I don't know why that wasn't done, uh, maybe he didn't know that, since he's probably never condemned anything here, but, uh, I'll follow up with them on Thursday.
Yeah, just so it doesn't sit for another week wide out.
I think the problem was, uh, Tony, weren't people in there or something? Did you tell me someone was in there, or no?
I heard somebody was staying in there.
That's why I think the police got called.
They were told they could stay in there, and then I believe the person's gone now.
Okay.
I'm not positive, so.
Yeah, I think that's how the call, it was a police call that obviously led to it, but, yeah.
But the door was kicked in, the whole door jam's busted, so you can't just lock it.
Okay.
You're gonna have to put plywood or something on there and screw it up.
Yep, okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll go through my things here. Uh, last Wednesday, I kind of, um, left the office a little early to go down to, um, the, uh, state of the county address, if no one's ever been to it, it was informative. I actually, uh, uploaded it to our, um, village Facebook page, um, just to see what state the county's in for going in twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, and, uh, we're in good shape. I was really curious about the sales tax part, which, uh, is kind of why I go every year, but, um, we got mentioned a couple times for our bridge from last year, which, uh, kind of crazy that it's gonna be a year almost that's open, but, um, I saw in, uh, some old pictures that, uh, today was the day that they actually blacktopped the bridge, so, a year ago. But anyway, um, anyone wants to watch that, you can see it uploaded here. I don't really have much more than I have to go over there. Uh, just a reminder that next, obviously, is when we're gonna start our meetings, the second meeting, or, I'm sorry, the second Monday of the month, unless there's a holiday in there. I did upload it to Facebook to, and I think I actually put it under events. Uh, we will still be meeting on the fourth, or fourth Monday, I wouldn't want to say Tuesday, the fourth Monday of the month, uh, to do a work session, um, that is open to the public, um, but obviously, there'll be no public comment during that particular, uh, work session. That is at six o'clock, just as a reminder to the board, and that starts next month. Quarterly reviews, you guys know what you need to do here, um, new business. Christine, the one thing that I see that is not on this agenda that probably needs to be, was the fire department.
What bathroom, all right.
Accepting their election results.
Oh, okay.
I don't know how we want to list that, but, uh, obviously, I definitely want to throw that in here, so. I guess we'll just put it under new business.
Okay.
Uh, let's see here, uh, we moved this from the last meeting, I just want everyone to kind of think about this. I don't know exactly what, but, uh, obviously, the town is doing their two-hundredth anniversary coming up here in September. Uh, I would like to do some sort of float, I don't think it needs to be elaborate, but I think it needs to be something. Um, we are obviously part of the town, um, just put your thinking cap on for that, and, uh, I'll work on getting a trailer, but, uh, I was just thinking about what we could do.
Don't the, uh, trying to think, then we have a little float one time with the, uh, prisons, thought it was something that we used for Little League parade or something, thought we had something like that, they have, they have one, that they use, I could be wrong.
Christine, we still have magnets from.
Uh, yeah, mhm.
And, and we didn't put names on that, right, they just said mayor and village board?
Yes.
Yeah, so we do have the two car magnets.
All right, just put some thought into that, let's talk about that.
We sent the battery pickup for that, we decorated the pickup.
Um, you, you guys do with DPW, I know you have trucks and stuff, but if you want to think about what we could do, um. I honestly thought about, um, prolonging, uh, maybe one of, putting one of our four or five signs up, since we have the logo made up, and I thought about maybe using that, but September's a long way away, so maybe that's not the smartest idea, um. But. Yeah. All right, just a thought, think about it for next week. Millennium grants. We signed up for this last year, um, we partnered up with the town, um, they re-signed the contract. Uh, our part of the contract would be separate contract, but our part would be twelve hundred dollars. Um, I did put a couple people on grants, I believe, I know I put Lance on grants. Okay, um. I'd like to re-sign up today, um, I'd like to get you guys on those emails. Obviously, you know the predicament that we're in, where we're eligible for not as much as we used to be grant-wise, but, um, I would really like other eyes on this to see what could come up that we're eligible for. Obviously, we have two parks, um, possibly, uh, looking to get the bathroom done at the Little League fields at some point, uh, maybe, uh, tried for an ADA compliant grant for that bathroom over there, didn't really work out so great, um, but I'm thinking maybe over the next year, we can see what other grants are available. Um, I'll get you guys on the email list, if you're willing to do this, and, uh, it's really, what the twelve hundred dollars is, is just for them to, it's not to write the grant, obviously, there's a cost to that, obviously, we've experienced this before, but this is to basically sign up for eligible grants, and you're emailed constantly through Millennium. Again, we're not eligible for a lot of it, but that, those that we are, um, it's kind of a phone call to Millennium to talk to our contact and to see what we can get rolling, so. Anyone have a question about Millennium? Anyone opposed to it? Okay, and I guess I'm just gonna do it right here under new business. Can I get a motion, um, to authorize me to sign the contract of Millennium grants for the total price of twelve hundred dollars? That would be our twenty percent of the contract.
Someone, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, how do you? Okay, how do you want to say this, Christine?
The resolution?
No, not the resolution, the fire.
Oh, the fire, um, I don't, I don't know, how do you want to say it? It would be, well, since we normally do it, I mean, I'll, I'll listen to you, it's not on here, since we normally do it as a motion to approve it during your reorg.
Reorg, yeah.
It would just be a motion, right?
Okay, so I guess it would be a motion except for, and I guess I'll, I'll word it this way. Can I get a motion to approve, and you guys, did you guys get the list of people that were elected?
No.
I was just gonna say, I really don't think we should do it yet because we haven't seen it.
All right, well, the unfortunate part is we have to do it because they're already two weeks behind by not doing it.
Well, you guys don't usually during the other parts approve the captains, it's only the three chiefs that are approved by you, just so that you know, like usually on the reorg.
Okay, but don't we still have to accept from the captains now? We don't? Okay, okay, so I guess it would be the three chiefs, so as of right now, can I get a motion to approve the following? Tony Coppola senior as car one, Tony Coppola junior as car two, and as of right now, we're going to leave car three vacant. Yeah, that's how I'm gonna word it, so can I get a motion for that?
Make a motion, group car one, Tony senior, car two, junior, and car three vacant right now.
You knew what my question was, whether that was their results? No, that's not, that's not the results, that's kind of what we did from the last meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving forward. Motions and resolutions, do you want to read this, Christine?
Yep, Rory's actually gonna read the resolution for the establishing of the ambulance district.
Ambulance district, okay.
I don't know what number it was, that's how it seemed to us.
No, no, this is ours.
We spoke about the ambulance district, the town is now at the state where they're, got all of their mapping and everything done, so they're at the state where this is the next step. They just need us to pass this resolution so they can do the next step.
Essentially a consent resolution, so this resolution of the board of trustees of the village Otisville authorizing its inclusion in the town of Mount Hope ambulance district, whereas the town for, the town of Mount Hope has heretofore initiated proceedings under Article twelve dash A New York State town law for the establishment of a townwide ambulance district by adopting a resolution authorizing the preparation of a general map plan report for providing ambulance services to the town. And whereas the town board heretofore held a public hearing regarding the establishment of the said ambulance district, and whereas pursuant to town law section two oh nine dash B, any village within the territorial limits of town of Mount Hope may be included in the proposed improvement district, so long as it was a resolution consenting to same as duly adopted, and whereas the board trustees of the village Otisville wish to express their consent and authorization to include the entirety of the village into the proposed ambulance district as contemplated in the ambulance district map plan report dated March third, twenty twenty-five, prepared by Pitt and Garrow and Deutsch Consulting Engineers P C, and now therefore it is hereby resolved, the board of trustees of the village Otisville hereby consent and authorize the town of Mount Hope to include the entirety of the village Otisville into the proposed ambulance district as is contemplated by the map plan report dated March third, twenty twenty-five, prepared by Pitt and Garrow and Deutsch Consulting Engineers P C, and is further resolved that the resolution is subject to a thirty-day permissible referendum period pursuant to New York State Village Law Section nine dash nine hundred, such that this consent and authorization shall not take effect until such period has elapsed from this day of adoption or until a referendum was upheld in accordance with applicable law.
Take a breath, that's it.
Yeah, no, Bob, I cannot, go, you watch it back.
Can I get a motion to read?
Just one question, I want to make sure.
Yeah, of course.
So what, with that wording, if I'm understanding correctly, it's, what we're doing is authorizing them to put it in the A budget so that the village residents pay the same towards this as, as any, outside the village.
That is.
It is not a separate tax that.
No.
That the village would be imposing.
Absolutely not, no.
It would be on the district-wide budget.
That is, that has been the story from the start.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure it wasn't one of these eighty, twenty things.
When, when, when it was presented, four months ago, three months ago, that was the way it was laid out, the mayor and I had discussed, I put these together from the town end. There are times where villages are on the hook for certain things, that's.
Oh, yeah.
So, but that was not the way it presented by the town of Mount Hope to us, council.
Yeah, that was my impression, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, I appreciate you grabbing that, but that's, that's what I understand it to be.
Can I get a motion as red?
Just don't move.
Second. Okay, all in favor? All right, I guess I'm gonna do a roll call on Mr. Bob.
Roll call.
Brian? Lance?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Manai? Okay, um, okay. Motions and resolutions.
Want to get a.
Christine, what you got?
A board resolution, some of the things that we had on here did not get any, did not get any bids, so just to let you know quickly, the four-inch water pump did not get a bid at all. The other four-inch water pump did not get a bid, the, there's one more thing, the didn't get a bid. The valve didn't get a bid, the spreader only got a twenty-five dollar bid, so I put that on here, but I don't think, I think you said you don't want to accept that, so. The board resolution to accept the two thousand eleven Dodge Ram pickup truck in the amount of three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, the Monroe hardened spreader in the amount of twenty-five dollars, the two hundred fourteen Ferris ride on mower in the amount of one thousand nine seventy-five, and the two thousand nine Chevy Tahoe emergency vehicle in the amount of three thousand eight fifty.
Minus the twenty-five dollars, you just read for the spreader.
Right, so it's only the three items.
It's only three items.
Okay.
That's okay, all right, can I get a motion? We talked to him about it, it wouldn't be on here if it wasn't. No, twenty-five dollar one is not on, take it out, it shouldn't be on here, no. Can I get a motion to accept the bids on the three items, the pickup truck, the mower, and also the.
I'll make a motion to accept the bids on the two thousand eleven Dodge Ram, two thousand fourteen Ferris ride on mower, and the two thousand nine Chevy Tahoe.
All in favor?
Now, there is something here that says you must counter offer with the price you would accept, so what is the, do you want to counter offer on the Monroe hardened spreader?
Yeah, four thousand dollars, does that sound about right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four thousand, really?
Yeah. They're not gonna, we're just gonna relist it with them.
Okay.
Did you guys, did you talk to them about it? I talked to them about seeing what we could do to relist it, let's try it again if we don't get anything.
I think we should relist it definitely in the fall, when the season comes, I think we can definitely.
We do have to counter, we have to counter, because then if we're gonna relist it.
Well, if you countered four thousand dollars from twenty-five thousand dollars, they're gonna say no, but they're.
And then we can take it down.
Right, but what I'm, my question is, then when we relist it, are we timed in any way?
Good question, do you know that question?
We're never, we're never tied into the auction. We can, if someone was to come to us right now, or was, before this auction was over and walk up to the front door and say, hey, I'll give you five thousand dollars for that vehicle, we can take it and cancel the auction, that's the ability that we have, so we were, we're never tied into the auction. We can sell outright or do whatever we want, pull stuff at any point, we are gonna relist with them and we are a customer of them, so there's no reason for them to do what we ask. But if you guys think that it makes more sense to list it at a different time of the year, I mean, obviously, a spreader is probably not
Right.
the best thing to sell right now, but, okay. Who's your contact there?
Mark.
Yeah, I just, I just tell him what your thoughts are and see what he says, that's.
Okay. Do we need a roll call on the resolution or not? Do we need one of every resolution?
Um, I like doing it because Rory.
I just, yeah, just, I just see no reason not to, it's a fix, about the same.
Yeah, so, did I do a roll call on this?
Did on the first one.
Bob? Brian?
Yes.
Lance? Diane?
Yes.
All right, audience participation, anyone from the audience want to come up and say something? Come on.
I'm gonna have to step behind with that, I'm a member of the Pocatello ladies' upriver, we've got a couple events coming up. Sunday, May fourth, this Sunday, from seven to noon, we're doing a pancake breakfast for Mother's Day. Ten dollars for adults, five dollars for kids and seniors, there'll be a fifty-fifty, we'll be selling raffles, calendar raffles, a, for raffling off a sixty-five inch visio color TV, smart TV, those raffles are ten dollars, we'll be raffling, we'll be selling my Lotto calendars at five dollars apiece. That's event one. So on with that, I do have the calendar raffles and the TV raffles with me, if anybody's interested. The second one, May thirty-first, we're doing a petty social at the firehouse, Pocatello. Five dollars for, at the door, you get two sheets, you want additional sheets, they're two for five dol, they're two for five dollars. It's gonna be a fifty-fifty, grab some baskets, a small tricky try. And there's prizes for that, that's May thirty-first, doors open at two, coin starts at three, there is a limit number of seats, so if you want to get in, get there early, because rooms can totally fit like, I think it's about eighty people, including staff in the building. There will, there, Brian is gonna put up a couple of flyers on our public bulletin boards, if anybody's interested. Get in touch with me, I can give you more information.
Anyone else, audience participation, how are you, sir?
Good, Chris Chang from Mount Hope Chinese Association, we have the Dragon Boat Festival planned for June twenty-eighth. We're, I'm here, come officially submit our application to the board to see if we can use the veterans park on that day from eleven to six, we're very mindful about the pressure and capacity constraints, parking constraints, and we can add, you know, do as extensive as a promotion as before, so just want people who really wanted to come enjoy and enjoy that event, so. Just wanted to put our application requests up there and hopefully the board can consider to grant the use of the park.
I remember last year when we looked at the application, one of the things we wanted to see was a diagram, a sketch of like where the food vendors would be, where the parking would be, that sort of thing. And if I'm remembering correctly, I think you like got ranked out though, last time, didn't you?
Rained.
Was it raining, there was some rain?
Yeah, it was in the fall.
Yeah, okay, I, I just remember that it wasn't as well as we expected. Was that the festival that you actually had designated parking on some of the streets, on Orchard Street, and the Catholic Church, I think, was one? Okay, so all of that would be part of the application, right?
Yeah, we have to redraw the.
John, you already know what I'm saying, what didn't we do from the last event to this event?
We put the box in.
Rock's there.
Oh, they're there?
Yeah.
I forgot I said that.
That was two events, that was two events over the rock.
I didn't realize that, I didn't see.
That was two events.
All right, Christine, what is, yeah, you're gonna have to come in during the week and fill out an application, we gotta, have to fill out an application, let's just make sure that the twenty-eighth is open, I believe it is. But someone could have snuck in here the last couple days to look at that. Obviously, we're gonna need some sort of insurance certificate, and I realize, yeah, just listen, I, what you guys did for parking last time, I had no idea how many spots and how many people would fit in a municipal lot until you guys did your study and told us, I didn't know how many spots were there, but I know from that event, so. Any other board members have any other questions? You know, there's not a lot of electricity down there, which I told her, there's just two outlets.
Yeah. It's summertime, I think if they can bring their own, if they wanted to cook, produce pork, and bring their own.
Anyone have any other questions?
The vendors, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, I was thinking, you meant the individuals?
No, I think the parking's not gonna be a problem.
Listen, we're, we're.
Well, the last, last one wasn't the problem, yeah, there was traffic, it set up, and now, because they're also, it's too often.
We're just gonna have to work with the police department and just, I'll go with, link them or talk to them, let's just see if it's, if you guys come fill out the application, let's, we have a while.
Efficient.
We have a little while, right, we have a little, so, that's fine, all I would ask is, if possible, maybe between now, if it works out in our next four weeks, if someone could come back, just kind of give us a quick update, it could even be an email, that's all. I imagine we're gonna talk about it in your meeting and then.
Yeah.
So, Lance and I should hopefully.
What are your updates?
Just, just an update as far as where, where you're at and where your, yeah.
Like the completed application, you mean?
No, just an update as far as with parking, it's not.
Yeah, the parking, the, the thing, I think we've, we've gone through that, so I just need to dust it off.
Updated.
Fresh update.
That's it.
New, new date.
That's it.
Get the, get the people on, understand, I don't know, resource, being our own traffic.
All right, Christine, we don't know if that day's open, do we?
I'm, I don't know right now, but I'm pretty sure, because I think most of what we've done is through May and maybe one at the beginning of June, I'll let you know. Which day was it, the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth. June.
We had two rentals this weekend, the third and the fourth, then we have one on the seventeenth and one on the seventh.
Do you have the dumpster still up there?
No, dumpster's down the well outside, but you put it back there.
Yeah, I'm just thinking for what we called it.
Yes, it is, so, do you want me to put it on the calendar, potentially?
Let me, let me do this, first, I'll, I'll run it through as a motion, but everything has to be in.
Yeah.
Completed in.
It's not a conditional.
Absolutely, conditioning on your application being in, and all the other paperwork that's done.
Yeah.
Please, obviously, like I said, I know we'll talk about it in your meeting next month, so we'll be ahead of this game, but we'll bring it back to the board, whatever you don't share with us, so, that being said, can I get a motion to approve pending all the paperwork be completed? We are gonna ask you for an insurance certificate.
Please.
All right. Yeah, documentation, parking documentation, as long as all that's in and, and good, can I get a motion to approve rental for the twenty-eighth of?
With allowing us to pay their one free rental.
Oh, we're not, we're, we're still charging you for it. Yeah, we can't, we can't, we can't waive the fee for, for nonprofits. Yeah, with, that's, so there is gonna be a fee to it, it's gonna be a rental fee. Christine, yes, 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 which unfortunately Rory didn't have to explain, what is the rental fee for?
For Mount Hope, it's seventy-five dollars plus a one hundred dollar deposit.
Okay.
Refundable.
A refundable.
Refundable deposit, as long as everything's cleaned up, and, and here's what I say, as long as everything's cleaned up, you're getting your deposit, fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay. Can I have someone act on my motion? All right, all in favor?
All aye.
Thank you.
How are you liking this? I second, but you worded the most.
Phil, I was trying to get it all in there, okay, Phil?
Yes.
How are you, sir?
Don't give up my name yet. Phil Addison, Six Sanatorium Avenue, and this is for you guys, I want to give you a little information about Eight Sanatorium. I call it Ammules Bar and Grill, but it's not anymore, we've been having issues with it since last fall, septic, their septic is smelling, I was gonna use an S word, but not appropriate, so anyway, we contacted the building inspector, oh, when I say we, it's me and Wallace. We contacted the building inspector last fall, he came over, but his fall was dry. we contacted the building inspector last fall, he came over, but his fall was dry, then winter came in, everything froze, nothing happened. Come, fast forward to the spring, happy earth, very nice man, came over, could smell it, cited him with a violation. That was about a month ago, I think they have thirty days to reply, I don't know if they've replied. Uh, we contacted the health department, they came in last week and did a dye test, and it looked like somebody slaughtered their cow down on the septic system. Very shabby, shabby, shabby septic system. There's other issues with the building, and I want you aware of that. And, uh, I want you aware. And, the other thing, on up note, you two guys weren't here last two weeks ago. I wanted to compliment your DPW guy that came and cleaned up Sanatorium Avenue, it was awesome.
It feels really good that you contacted the health department already, because that's something, I mean, it would have had to do.
Yeah, they contacted.
They're the ones who had to sign off on the plans to begin with, when the building was repaired.
He didn't sign off on it.
The health department didn't?
No, the building inspector from previous.
No, because it would be a health department thing. So anyway, maybe, maybe something slipped through the cracks, from what you're saying, but it's good that they're involved now.
He filed a violation with the owners LLC, I'm not sure which LLC it is, and then we contacted the health department.
Yeah.
They inspected it, they contacted the building inspector to let them know what's going on.
Yeah.
And we actually contacted DEC, but they say that's not a DEC problem, the health department is in charge. But, you know, it's already, you got thirty days, and then you got another thirty days, and then you got another thirty days, and I gotta smell this.
And then it's winter.
I can use the C-word.
Thanks.
Actually, Phil, seeing you reminded me of something, Memorial Day is coming, and the banners that go on the utility poles?
Banners, what banners?
The, uh, there was a auto accident or something right over here, right in front, so are you aware that the old pole's still there? Before they take that away, those brackets, I don't know if it's DPW or, we have to transfer those over.
Yeah, actually, I'm surprised that pole's still.
Well, that's why, seeing you reminded me about it, and I was like, oh, you're the man.
Yeah, we're gonna transfer that over.
Yeah, before it disappears, then, uh-oh, no brackets.
Another bracket.
Yeah.
I'll send you a bill for fifty bucks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else, audience participation? Okay, that being said, um, can I get a motion to approve our, paying our bills? Uh, general, eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars, eighty-two cents, water, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars, thirty-seven cents, fire, two thousand fifty-three dollars, thirty-eight cents, and capital, um, one hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars.
I made one for paid bills, I read one there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, I just have one thing that I wanted to put out here, Frank, since we just sold your lawnmower. The purpose of selling a lawnmower is because, how old is it?
Yeah, fourteen years old.
Okay, so it's well outlived its life and then some. I know you have, I know Christine, thank you for looking this up today, I know you have seventeen thousand dollars in village equipment line. Um, you're gonna look into getting a new mower, obviously, since we are getting rid of one, um, I don't wanna be, since it's May and we're gonna be mowing, I guess, sooner than later. What do you think approximately, I know you're gonna look into two different ones?
The Ferris again, and scag mark.
Okay.
Looking between probably, well, thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so if we give you authorization, when you get those prices to spend up to fifteen thousand, is that gonna be good? Trying not to spend a dime over?
No.
You're running your line pretty good. I, I, I guess, being as old as it is, two thousand bucks, I mean, sounded like a lot to me, but obviously, you know, it is what it is, but we got fourteen years out of it, so that's a long time, okay. So that being said, um, I just don't want him to have to wait till the next meeting and then to the next meeting after that, so, as long as Frank gets pricing and it's obviously two different quotes, um, I'd like to authorize him to purchase a mower, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars out of the village equipment line. Yeah, I guess that's.
It does have to be a resolution because you're taking it out of the reserve fund, instead of, instead of just a motion.
Okay. Got it. So, I guess I'll just read it as a resolution then, okay, um, how would you like me to word this?
They resolved.
Um, I'd say, you know, a board resolution to
Spend up to fifteen thousand.
Spend up to fifteen thousand out of the village equipment, which you're really not gonna, because you're gonna take part of what he already got, but say at, up to fifteen thousand of the village equipment reserve on, on a new lawnmower.
So we're gonna take the, both the four thousand for your truck and put towards it, and then two thousand for the mower and put towards it. And then whatever the remaining amount is, so you're not gonna spend fifteen, so, okay, okay, so probably more like, why don't it just rate it as like ten, is that gonna work?
Sure.
Okay, um, can I get a motion as stated?
Motion to accept the resolution as read by Christine.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck with your mower, I look forward to seeing it. Um, for those of us that didn't see, our brand-new truck is sitting out front. Yeah, are you, uh, happy with it? It's, uh, I figured it's a nice-looking truck and, uh, okay. Um, I know you've got a hundred things on your list, but, um, lettering it is on your list, okay, I figured, I just figured I'd bring it up, that's all. Okay, um, closing comments, Bob, what you got?
Uh, nothing.
Brian, what you got?
I thought I had something, but I do not have anything.
All right, Lance, what you got?
Nothing right now.
Diane, what you got?
I already asked all my questions.
All right, I, I have one quick thing, uh, DMV bus was here, seventy-six, um, people had shown up to obviously get the licenses, there was, or license, there was a problem with it, uh, it is not coming here in the month of May. Um, they are going to postpone service of it for the entire month due to the licenses being overdue. I'm sorry, due to the licenses being due, so it will not be here, I did take down some postings that it was gonna be here on the sixteenth, so if you see it anywhere, it will not be. Um, I will put something up online to state why it's not gonna be here from the county clerk's office, but, um, it will resume service back in Otisville back in order in June. That being said, can I get a motion to close the meeting at seven fifty-seven?
What would be your answer?
Second?
All in favor? Thank you, no, you're good, you're good, gave me plenty of room.